I'd like to call to order the regular meeting Thursday, June 7th, 2018. Housekeeping, we would like to remind everyone to please silence their phones or electronic devices. If you have any blue slips, please bring them up to the front to Ms. Jessica before the topic you're wishing to speak on comes up. Item number two, invocation and pledge of allegiance, Mr. Collins.
In the name of the Father, and Son, and Holy Spirit, I am giving God all the honor and praise for this day which is the head of my life. Lord, you say we are two or three or gathered, you are in thy midst. I ask you now, Lord, to take over this meeting and lead us. Please join me in the prayer for the hurricane season. Oh God, master of this passing world, you are the humming voice of your children. The sea of galaxies obeys your order and returns to its former quality. You are still the master of land and sea. We live in shadow and danger which we have no control. The gulf is like a provoking angry giant, can't wait from the scene of latency. An oversight extends environs, invades our land and spreads chaos and disaster. During this hurricane season, return to your loving Father, spare from past tragedies, whose memory is still surviving and whose wounds seem to infuse with ample time. For burden star of the sea, our beloved mother, we ask you to plead with your son in our behalf, so that spare from the calamity common to this area. And amated with true spirit of gratitude, we walk in the footsteps of your divine son to reach the heaven and Jerusalem where thornous return awaits us. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge, please. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the mistletoe with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshire?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Punt was unable to attend this evening. Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Farnum?
Here.
Mr. Gidry?
Here.
Mr. Gillery?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Latour?
Here.
Ms. Mayo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie?
Here.
Vice President White?
Here.
And President Behrs.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Item number four, appearance by W. Kevin Melton, Executive Director of Chenal International Airport. Mr. Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bowles and I had the privilege of meeting with Kevin Melton, the new director at Chenal recently, and we felt like, and he was very interested in coming to a public meeting to see all of you and meet you in person. We were very impressed. He comes with a lot of energy, a lot of ideas, understands working with boards, and he's retired Colonel. He'll tell you a little about that, but we feel very good about him and just wanted to make sure you all had a chance to meet him, ask him any questions. And at this time, I would ask Mr. Melton to come on up and say hello.
Thank you, Mr. Bean.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, jurors, ladies and gentlemen in the audience. Certainly a pleasure to be here. Again, I'm Kevin Melton, address at Chenal's 3650 Senator J. Bennett Johnston Avenue, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70615. So with that said, I'm not going to bore you with the gory details of who I am. I'm more worried about how I can integrate and synergize with the efforts here in Lake Charles than the Calquashu Parish. That's my priority. You know, as you know, our objective, and when they hired me in, was to grow jobs. Well, how am I going to grow jobs? Well, a lot of hard work, but I would tell you that it doesn't take just Team Chenal to be doing the work and going forth on its own. It's an absolute team effort. And I would tell you that anything we do at Chenal, it's going to be because of the support that we get from the parish and the support that we get from the city. So I fully understand that. Part of what I need to do as the new guy and the outsider come in, and I will tell you, I'm a Southerner. I'm in Tennessee and by birth. Don't hold that against me. I am a Louisiana, and at least I got to get my Louisiana plates, and so I guess you can call me Louisiana then. I do know a little bit about the area. I did live in Biloxi, Mississippi, so the landscape's fairly close as far as the heat in the summer, and it's warm in the winter. So, but when we moved here with my family of five, my wife and three daughters, this was our 13th move. So we've been around the block. I've seen God's green earth from one side to the other. So I would tell you that we are very blessed to be here in the grand United States and certainly in southwest Louisiana and all the great things that this area has to offer. My job is to, like I said, grow jobs and support economic development, and that's my number one priority. We will do it in a solid, strategic manner focused on law and policy and directives. My team, my objective is to make sure that my team has provided the resources and training to do the job, make sure that the tenants are still, that are there currently, remain there, and make sure that we have a good strategic plan to grow more tenants and ultimately gets us to what I would call the bullseye. And the jurors, you have a copy of the bullseye that I developed as I was trying to think through. If I could show one thing to an individual, what's my strategy and what's my aim point? That aim point, as I've already referenced a couple times, is economic development and to grow jobs. I will come back at a later date when you guys feel like it's the right time to come, and I want to give you an update on the things that we're doing to move Chenal forward, but not just Chenal. Chenal is one very small aspect of the larger good, and that larger good being the parish and the city. So I want to come back and provide an update to you on what we're doing to try to grow those opportunities here in southwest Louisiana. When you'll have me back, that'll be up to your choosing. But for the short term, I'm certainly happy to be here. I'm honored to be a part of this area, grow in the community. We want to grow roots in the community. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. We do have some questions or comments. Mr. McMillan.
Kevin, welcome to southwest Louisiana. I think you're going to find it's a great bunch of people and a great place to raise those girls, and we're glad to have you here. Heard rumors that you've been active and involved in air shows in the past. We kind of got our air show with some legs underneath it now. It's starting to get bigger and better. It's a big economic boost to southwest Louisiana. Could you maybe touch on that just for a moment?
Sure. You know, my background, and I didn't go into great detail. I am a retired Air Force guy. I ran airports and air traffic control facilities most of my entire career. I did have a stint at work for an hour Secretary of Defense, General Mattis, in one position, and so I know a little bit about the strategic piece from the national government lay of the land. But specifically from the airshow piece, running airfields and airports, I've had exposure to multiple airshows. My last being the Dayton, Ohio airshow, the veteran Dayton airshow. I was the military airshow director. Roughly, what was it, don't quote me, well over 100,000 spectators over the course of the three-day event. Had experience with all the service performers from the Golden Knights, the Blue Angels, the Thunderbirds, through various different airshows outside the confines of Dayton. So I'm not going to tell you I'm an expert, but I'm very comfortable around the airshow circuit. And my objective is to, and again, it's not Kevin Melton's airshow, or really, quite frankly, Chenal's airshow. While I'm the airshow president, the board president, it is a different entity. I will grow the airshow as much or as little that the community can stand. What I would tell you, that as a lover of aviation and certainly a supporter of education, that I would hope that a local community love airplanes as much as I do. And, you know, through that airshow, I want to develop an interest in not only aviation, but in education and the parts and pieces that go along with that. And you all know the STEM, the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And so if I can plant one seed in one young man or one woman's life, then it's a success, and that's what we can do with the way of the airshow.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Okay, Mr. Melton, we appreciate you coming and look forward to that update. And again, welcome to the hot box.
Glad to be here. Thank you so much, gentlemen, ladies.
Mr. Gidry, you had a...
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, for acknowledging me on that. At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Peterson and some people from the Riddell Company. One of the things that we've been looking at for a while now, and it's been on the minds of a lot of parents who've contacted me and called me and asked and said, "Mr. Gidry, is it really safe for my kid to play high school football?" And that's a question I can't answer. I'm not a medical person. I don't know the ins and outs of what it does, forceful concussion-wise and those type things. But the people here today are going to explain something to you all that's going to, I think, revolutionize the game for us for how it will protect young people, because I'm a strong advocate for young people getting involved in sports because of how it can change their life and how it can make them productive citizens in the community. And I just want to speak today to say what they've done here today, I think is going to amaze a lot of you as to the technology, as to what's in these helmets. And I think, parents, I think that you will feel a little bit more safer about allowing your kids to go out and play sports here in southwest Louisiana. At this time, I'm going to leave it and turn it over to you, Mr. Peterson. Please explain to us what we're going to see today.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. My name is Leif Peterson. I'm the Senior Vice President of Philanthropy at Lake Charles Memorial Hospital. I'm in charge of the foundation. About eight years ago, Dr. Brett Cassio came to me and he said, "I'm very concerned. We're seeing a lot more concussions and equally so many different injuries in the high school kids, and we have some disparity because we have very good booster clubs and we have very bad or non-existent booster clubs in our high schools." So the mission for him and for me was for us to start the Foundation for Fair Play, to create an equal playing field for everyone and to prevent injury. In the past eight years, we've raised almost $500,000. We've given away almost $250,000. And I'm going to tell you briefly what we've done. We've given knee braces to every offensive player in every high school, private and public. All this goes to every player, every football program in Calquashu Parish, whether it's public or private. We've done over $100,000 in helmets, shoulder pads, basketball wall padding, baseball backstops. We even have provided defibrillators, mobile defibrillators to every trainer, because there are incidents of heart attacks in the stands and they have to go back to the school to get a defibrillator. No longer. Our trainers have those with them. We also do ACL studies on every female that plays basketball or volleyball, because women fall differently down when they come from shooting a shot or volleyball, and they're very susceptible to ACL injuries. So we now have a three-monitor camera system where we film every player, and the trainers are able to talk with the coaches and the players to say if we may have some problems that we need to look at. Our latest initiative, we're in partnership with Riddell, who we've been in partnership actually since we started this. And we have two of the gentlemen here with us today, and today we gave $100,000 to Riddell. And what we did is we made sure that every football player in Calquashu Parish has a helmet with a special Insight sensor inside, which they will explain to you. And this is going to be a huge step. We're the only parish in Louisiana that has done this. There are five high schools. No one has done parish-wise, and we're very proud of that. On June 20th, we'll announce that we're doing an additional $15,000. We're going to outfit every football player at McNeese as well. So this is a big initiative for us. And I'd like to introduce to you right now two of the gentlemen. Let's see, Jam, are you up here? Yes. Todd Jambrone is a gentleman I've worked with, and he's the regional person that we deal with for Riddell, and he's the go-to guy for us when we need to buy helmets. Jamie Raspberry is our head trainer in charge of, we have eight trainers, is that right, Jamie?
Thirteen.
Thirteen trainers, I'm sorry, and they're positioned at every high school in Calquashu Parish. And last, to come speak to you briefly, we have two short videos we'd like to share with you. Mr. Dan Vuletic. And Dan is the Regional Vice President for Riddell. Dan?
Thank you, Leif. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for the opportunity to come talk to you today. On behalf of Riddell, we're very honored to partner with the F3 Fund and Memorial Foundation on this initiative. I think I'll start by saying, on behalf of Riddell, we absolutely deeply believe in football. We are very intensely dedicated and passionate about improving player safety and forwarding player safety in terms of innovation. What we're going to present to you today is an innovation that we've been working on for the better part of two decades. So what you're seeing today is work going back over the last almost 17 years where we've actually implemented sensors in helmets to download almost 5 million impacts. Those 5 million impacts has allowed Riddell's research and development team to develop products that continually improve our ability to improve player safety. And what you're going to see today is a product, to Leif's point earlier, called Insight. What Insight does essentially is it monitors in real time every impact that occurs on the field of play. And what we're able to do with this product is essentially, this is what's inside the helmet. It's a five-zone sensor that can monitor every impact in real time. So any impact to the young man's head will be recorded by the system. But more importantly, over the last 17 years, these 5 million impacts have allowed us to develop an algorithm inside the helmet that can tell us when an athlete receives an impact that will put him at an elevated risk. That doesn't mean necessarily that the impact or the alert tells us that he has a concussion, but it tells us in certain terms, it gives us another set of eyes on the field, okay? What more importantly, we're going to show you today too, though, is a piece of this Insight tool we're calling ITT. And ITT stands for Insight Training Tool. One of the big things we want to make sure that we understand is what types of impacts our young men are having and our ability to see if a young man is receiving impacts that are abnormal. So it gives us, as a coaching staff, the opportunity to teach and correct behaviors that might be abnormal for that athlete. So we ultimately can keep the head out of the game and keep kids safer and keep them playing this great game. I'll leave you with this. We believe in the character the game builds and the skill that it develops in young men. And so that's why it's so important for us at Riddell to partner with you and the F3 Fund to do these kind of things. And we're commending Calquashu Parish for their leadership in doing this. So we'll play the video now, Leif.
We have two short videos to share with you.
On behalf of the Riddell team, I want to thank the F3 Advisory Board with support from Lake Charles Memorial Foundation for your recent purchase of almost 600 Riddell Insight helmets as part of a $100,000 grant centered around athletic injury prevention. It's exciting to know that because of F3's bold vision, each student-athlete playing football in Calquashu Parish will be wearing a Riddell helmet with Insight this season. Riddell's business is to protect athletes, and this complements F3's goal of increasing concussion awareness and tracking, which make this an ideal partnership for both organizations. I want to applaud the important work F3 is doing in my home state of Louisiana, and we look forward to seeing your teams take the field this fall using Riddell Insight. Best of luck this season.
Well, that was the surprise video that was going to come second, but we will show you the training video quickly.
Football is evolving. Programs at every level are in a constant pursuit of ways to practice and play smarter. And as football moves toward a more data-driven game, Riddell is leading the way to a stronger future through innovative smart helmet technology. Riddell is the only helmet manufacturer to deliver innovation with protective equipment that also analyzes and collects data from the field of play. In 2004, as the pioneer in smart football helmets, Riddell launched the Sideline Response System, an advanced tool used by researchers to collect robust head impact data. In 2013, the Insight Impact Response System was born and has since become the leading impact monitoring system in football. Insight wirelessly alerts the sideline to impacts that exceed advanced head impact exposure metric thresholds. The next step on Riddell's innovation roadmap is the Riddell Insight Training Tool, or ITT. ITT uses a sabermetric approach to athlete protection. It is a web-based data center that builds player impact profiles, rich with information that a coach may use to identify opportunities to proactively influence player behavior through training techniques and practice plans. A core feature of the Insight Training Tool is the Practice Planner, which helps create practice schedules and project levels of contact for specific drills or time periods by player position, group, or activity, giving coaches a greater understanding of when athletes may experience periods of head impact exposure. ITT's impact analytics allow multiple staff members to collaborate online, at home, or on the road, to monitor and review impact profiles for groups or individuals by drill and level of contact. The Insight Training Opportunities feature monitors and learns player behaviors and flags specific head impact trends. Individual data profiles are compared to national and team averages, specific to skill level and position, and compares each individual player's current impact profile to their own recent history. ITT is a truly smart football helmet platform backed by millions of on-field impacts going back more than a decade. ITT uses Insight-equipped smart helmets to not only monitor and alert the sideline to significant impacts, but also to collect, consolidate, and analyze nearly every head impact to learn and track specific behaviors by player, unit, or team. ITT and its features are designed for smarter practice, smarter play, and for coaches that are in constant pursuit of both. As football evolves toward a smarter, more intelligent game, the Riddell Insight Training Tool provides next-level intelligence to staffs as they strive to teach and play smarter football and ultimately lead football to a stronger future.
Thank you for allowing us to come and present before you. This was a big day for us, and I think a big day for the athletes of Calquashu Parish, and we look forward through the F4 Fund to be providing more equipment that will help prevent injury. Thank you, Kevin, for bringing us.
No, thank you guys for actually being here. And looking at the video, what I'm more amazed at is that this will also be used in practice. I mean, a lot of impact happens in practice. It's not only game time, and this can help trainers monitor. If he's on the sideline and if a kid has contact, he can actually know just how much contact actually happened during practice, if that kid needs to sit for a minute or whatever. That's great. And I think parents, getting an opportunity to see this, will feel much more comfortable saying, "I think it's okay for my child to play football in Calquashu Parish." Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Much love, guys. Thanks so much.
We got some comments. Mr. Farnum?
One second before y'all run off. I'd like to make a comment. Thank y'all for what you're doing. I know this helmet looks a lot more like something that an astronaut would wear than what a football player would wear.
Not like what Kevin wore the leather helmets back at LSU.
So it's, I know it doesn't look anything like the helmet that I ever wore, but I got to applaud you guys, because, you know, the one thing that you're never going to run across on a football field with a true competitive athlete is the guy that says, "Coach, I think I'm hurting a little bit. I want to sit out."
Yes.
You'll never hear that. You almost can't pry that information out of their mouth because they just want to go. So this is going to help the coaches do their job a lot better than what that athlete's going to tell them when they're hurting. So thank y'all for what y'all are doing.
I was telling Dan, I hate to admit this, but my senior year playing, we were the last school beside Jesuit that wore leather hats. Mr. McMillan?
I was just going to say, thank you. It's great technology. Love to see it. I wish you had it years back because we have a former LSU player on our team that we know he's had some major impacts. Thank you very much for what you're doing.
And again, he's not willing to admit it.
Well, that would have taken all the game, doesn't it?
Well, the surprise of the video is Peyton got Calquashu right.
Yes, he did.
How many takes was that? Anybody know?
One take.
He's a ringer.
We were thrilled to see that.
Yeah, that was special.
Les, could you try the tone?
Try it after you.
That's some serious...
Thank you, guys.
How much is this weight?
Great.
How much is this weight, please, Dan?
It's just right about four pounds, just a little bit over.
I have a headache just wearing it.
So are the days of the kids getting their helmet on their senior year, is that going away? Or can you take the electronics out?
You can take it out.
Okay.
You know, I...
Oh, God!
We need a picture of that. We need a picture of that.
We're calling the linebacker.
I thought that was for...
It looks good on you, Sandy. It looks good on you.
Sometimes we need them up here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll attend our next fundraiser where our auctioneer will help us make some of this money back.
Definitely. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Next, another personal, point of personal privilege, Mr. Bean, excuse me, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, you are partners in the Positive Change Impact Program for the DA's office. And I think you'll be very proud to hear the work that's been going on over the last several months. Also to say, they're probably the best dressed group that's ever entered this audience. But Mr. Droge is taking the lead on this, and he's here to provide us with an update and really give us some great information that I'm sure, again, y'all will be proud of.
Great.
Mr. Droge.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Ronald Blanchard, please.
Good evening. How are you all doing? My name is Ronald Blanchard. I live at 200 Balboa Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70615. Mr. Droge has allowed me and Braylon Harris and Mr. Eric Dozier to put together a phenomenal program, an initiative to create new leaders, to change agents within the schools. And what you're going to see this evening is a young man coming forward, Mr. Derek Williams. He's an eighth grader for Lake Charles Charter Academy, getting ready to play football and basketball for Hamilton. And he's going to share with you our program. Mr. Derek Williams.
Good afternoon. My name is Derek Williams, and I took part in this group, and I didn't really think too much of it, to be honest, because I knew that, you know, there's opportunities all over the world. But at the same time, there's not many for us as African-Americans. And what this group is all about is us having a positive change no matter where we come from, our environment. This is a way to get out. This is a way to improve the world, impact the school, impact your community. There's no more excuses for us anymore. They choose leaders in this group to not only change other people's hearts. Whenever they saw us on the news, I remember a lot of people asked me, "How can I get in? How can I get in? How can I get in?" It's just people that want to take part in this just because we're changing. You have to want this. You have to change. This group is not just for people who want to look good, who, people who just want to put a suit on and say, "I'm a part of this group." This is for people who want opportunity. We have the opportunity, and we're going to make advantage of this. We don't want it to just be Louisiana. We want little things like this to prosper all over the world. We want this not to only be Louisiana. We want it to be all over the United States. But at the same time, we have to take advantage of the opportunities that you are providing with us by funding the group. I thank you so much deeply for just funding it and giving us the opportunity of a lifetime. Thank you.
Wow. Let me first of all ask, what district do you live in?
You getting worried?
I hope it's not District 9, because that young man is on the rise. This, I wish that they could have had this when I was growing up, as a young kid, to have a positive impact in young kids' lives. And what I heard this young man say that impressed me more than anything, not only impress your community, not only impress your state, but impress the world. That's strong. To have that big an impact on what you're trying to do, to let other kids know that there's a way out. We don't always have to look a certain way to be stereotyped, to think that this is who we are. And that, to me, the look that you guys have there, professional. I applaud you guys. And if there's anything that I can do on a personal level, not only outside the jury, as a governing body, I definitely want to be a part in you young man's lives. Because what I see in you is a hell of a bright future, and I hope that you guys will continue to embrace what you're doing and be serious about it. And I'm going to tell you, one of the guys that I know is Pastor Harris, he's going to stay on top of you. That's one thing I know. And from what I see here today, you guys are moving in the right direction, and I can't applaud you enough for what you're doing. And I know that young men, seeing this, are going to say, "What can I do to be a part of what they're doing?" Because I want to look like that, and I want to sound like that, and I want people to look at me like that. Because that's the thing it is with young black men in America right now. You get looked a certain way to get determined who you are, and that's not what it's all about. That young man came to the mic this evening, impressed a lot of us, because he was articulate, he was understanding what he was saying, and he was truthful about what he was saying. That's what impresses me. That's how America should look. And I can't say enough about what you guys are doing. Continue, and may God bless all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Gidry. Mr. Gilry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like for you all to all stand up. I'd love for y'all to come take a picture. There's one particular right there. He's definitely going to replace me. That's my grandson.
Congratulations.
Good job.
I like that good handshake.
That's how you shake it, isn't it?
Nice, right?
Congratulations on a heck of a program.
Can we make sure everybody's faces? Okay, y'all. On three. One, two, three, smile. And one more. One, two, three, big smiles.
Take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer. Ms. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have two applications before you tonight and we recommend they both be approved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any discussion at all? Any objection? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item six. Consideration of approving payment of all current invoices. Got a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated May 3, 2018. I got a motion by Ms. Trimmie, second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item eight. Consideration of approving the Budget Committee report dated May 31, 2018. Mr. Forham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget Committee met on May 31st and recommended approving following requests for grant funding from the Gaming Fund. Item A, Ward 1, $10,000, Ward 1 Economic Development Board for roadway beautification and enhancement of pedestrian safety along Highway 171, Highway 378, and Parish Road. Item B, Ward 2, $4,620, Ward 2 Fire Protection District Number 1 for purchases CB, SCBA air packs, masks, and other fire equipment. Item C, Ward 2, $150,000, Community Center and Playground District Number 7 of Ward 2. Additional funds for the construction of a covered pavilion at Hayes Park and construction of a new ball field in Bell City. Item D, Ward 4, $5,000, $1,000 from District 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Ward 4 File Marshal's Office for expenses related to the Marshal's litter enforcement program. Item E, Ward 4 District 14, $7,500, City of Westlake, funding towards the purchase and installation of lights to welcome the Westlake side. Item F, Ward 4 District 14, $7,500, City of Westlake, for costs associated with the marketing and promotion of the La Villa Uni Festival in October 2018. And item G, Ward 8, $6,510, Ward 8 Fire Protection District Number 2, for the purchase of two hydraulic strong arm tools. This concludes the report and all of these items met with full approval and I would make a motion they be accepted.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion to accept and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Mr. Scott.
Are all these out of their gaming district funds?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Item carries. Any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item number nine. Consideration of approving the Public Works Committee report dated May 31, 2018. Mr. Brain.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Committee report dated May 31, 2018 is as follows. A, received report from staff regarding the business plans for Waterworks District Number 5 of Ward 3 and 8 Water System Improvement Project. B, recommended approving an active sale agreement for the Jones Road and Fork Road Improvement Project. C, approving a temporary servitude agreement for the I-10 South Frontage Road Construction Project Phase 2. D, recommended approving an active sale agreement for the Patton Street Bridge Replacement Project. E, recommended approving an active sale agreement for the Cordis Drive Extension Project Phase 2. F, recommended approving items related to the Johnny Bro Road Extension Project located in Ward 7. G, recommended approving a professional engineering contract between the Police Jury and Lawson Engineering Incorporated for the Dean Drive Bridge Replacement Project. H, recommended approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the Police Jury, Gravity Brains District Number 7 of Ward 8, and the Towne of Byway for improvement collateral L-14. I recommended authorizing the parish engineer to advertise for Calcasieu Parish Project Number 2018-10 Johnny Bro Road Extension Project. J, recommended adopting resolution accepting Calcasieu Parish Project Number 2017-03, overlaying a various roads in Calcasieu Parish Ward 4 as substantially complete. K, recommended adopting a resolution accepting Lonnyop Estates subdivision. L, advised that Mr. Scott was recently appointed as a member of the Environmental Protection Agency Small Community Advisory Subcommittee to advise the EPA Administrator on environmental issues of concerns to residents of smaller communities. That's the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. Second. Got a motion and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 10. Consideration of approving the Agenda Committee report dated May 31, 2018. I have a motion by Mrs. Mayo and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 11. Take appropriate action to move voting precincts number 332 North and 332 South to McNeese State University Bell Hall from the former location at McNeese State University Gale
Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss by Mr. Landry.
Mr. Bean, can you tell us why?
Yes, sir. Mr. Landry, this is, these two precincts actually, and Kathy will correct me if I'm wrong, they started out at the McNeese Library, Fraser Library. They had a big renovation, so it moved to Gale Hall. Now, it's just a preferred site to go to Bell Hall. It's got better parking, better space. So it was a preferential choice instead of going back to the library. And that's really it. It's all, it's all been in the same, on the same campus the whole time.
Move on.
Got a motion. Second. By Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brain. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving an agreement between the Police Jury, the City of Lake Charles, the Community Foundation of Southwest Louisiana, and the Southwest Louisiana Convention and Visitors Bureau for cost sharing of a feasibility assessment for a bike share program. I have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? We have some discussion. Mr. Gilry.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we know about the cost on it to be? Yes, sir. Alberto has kept up with this. He can give you some information. Also, John Mans, the Community Foundation Board, and Sarah Judson, the Director here. But as I understand it, the total is $40,000 for the whole study and the breakdown is under the agenda note as to what each entity is paying, would pay in this. Is the bike path gonna be downtown or not sure? I would ask Sarah if you'd like to come up or the appropriate person to get a little detail. It is a, this is a study to see if this would, the area would support something like this and they can explain what a bike share program is.
Yeah, so I'm John Mans. I live in Lake Charles. The, I'm Ward Chair for the Community Foundation. And to specifically ask about the funding for this, the intent is to develop a bike rental program and it's more than just a feasibility study. There's about 200 of these across the nation in cities as large as New York, Chicago, and cities as small as Bemidji, Minnesota, which has 1,400 people in it. What we're looking at here is doing actually two studies, one for Lake Charles area and one for the Sulphur area. And what they've determined over these rollout programs is the more upfront work that's done, the more chance of the program being successful. So this is, this effort is to determine what is the appropriate number of bikes in the location? What's the appropriate location and number of docking stations? And what's the most effective routes to plan for people that wanna use these bikes for not only transportation but for recreational and for visitor activity in people moving to the area? So the program consists of a team from Bantam Strategies, who is the organization that we've worked with to develop this. And they will come in and work with stakeholders to identify these and answer these questions and then roll out a program with a full written report for both communities, Sulphur and Lake Charles. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, Mr. Man. Thank you, Mr. Gilry. Mr. McMillan?
I'm really excited about this. I appreciate y'all doing this study. I can tell you, Sue and I had a date night the other night, went out to eat and then we went to the lakefront to walk and there's some people rode by on bikes. I said, "You know, there could be an opportunity that we would have bikes that we could come over here, park the truck, ride down the boardwalk, to the promenade, ride through Lake Charles, get a little exercise, and rent a bike." Because, you know, we don't have bikes, we don't have transportation to bring bikes. But to have this and even go to the downtown area or whatever, I think it's gonna be tremendous for the Lake Charles area, hopefully expanding into Sulphur. I look forward to the opportunity of having this here someday and I think it'll bring another, one of those added attractions to Southwest Louisiana. So thank y'all for bringing this forward and hopefully the study will say, yes, we need to try this out.
That's exactly our intent.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Mr. Gidry.
Thank you. I think Mr. McMillan also wanted to ask, would they be gas also to bikes?
Actually, it's funny. One of the neat aspects of this is they have what's called a pedal assist, an electronic bike. And if you haven't ridden one, they are a hoot. And that, one thing I'm gonna be lobbying for is we get some of those because it is a real attraction to ride, this bike for you. It's not, it's not a motorbike, but as you pedal, there's an electronic device that is assisting you and it makes it so much fun. So how can ride that?
I'm with Mr. McMillan. This is great. I mean, you see them in Houston and stuff like that and it's great. And the thing that I like mostly about them, they have GPS on them. So you know where they're at. You know where the location of those bikes at, at all times. So I think this is great.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. White.
They put the right person on the board for that, that's for sure. Oh, thank you. And then you brought up the pedal assist, you know, it's, I could see you doing that as well. I mean, it's trying to catch you on foot versus rollerblades, you know, that's a different story there. But they did put the right man in charge. It's good to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. All right, we had a motion.
I'll make a motion in a second.
That was by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 13. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the proposed budget for the operation of the Southwest Louisiana Crime Laboratory for fiscal year 2018 to 2019 as requested by Sheriff Tony Mancuso. I have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 14. Consideration of adopting an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property located at 2392 Tammy Drive, Sulphur, through funding received from the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to mitigate future flood losses of this repetitive loss structure. I have a motion by Mr. Forham and a second by Mr. Gidry. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 15. Consideration of adopting a resolution indicating no objection to the proposed project by Doug and Amanda McKelvin to construct a new wharf and boathouse located at 4334 Pryon Lake Road. I've got a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objections? Motion carries. Item 16. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the Calcasieu Parish Public Transit Systems' Substance Abuse Management Policy.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. White and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 17. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the submission of the certification package for the Workforce Development Board for 2018 to 2019 to the Louisiana Workforce Commission. I have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objections? Motion carries.
Moving on to 18.
Item 18. Consideration of authorizing the Parish Public Purchasing Agent to advertise for requests for proposals, RFP, for solid waste collection and disposal for police jury facilities including the Parish's two solid waste convenience centers. I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 19. Take appropriate action on bids received by the Parish Purchasing Agent for the following. A, Calcasieu Parish Project Number 2018-2.
Moving on to 19.
The Parish Engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $3,707,740 of Prairie Contractors LLC be accepted. Item B, one three-quarter ton crew cab pickup truck. The staff recommends that this item be deferred until the regular meeting on June 21, 2018. Item C, mosquito control chemicals and solvents. The staff recommends that the low responsible and responsive bids of ADAPCO LLC and Target Specialty Products be accepted. Item D, one chipper with trailer. The staff recommends to accept the low responsible and responsive bid of $36,862.76 from Vermeer, Texas, Louisiana. Item E, official journal. Staff recommends that the proposal of the American Press be accepted for a one-year period beginning July 1, 2018. Item F, Calcasieu Parish Project Number 2018-3. Parish Engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $2,938,268.67 of RE Height Construction LLC be accepted. Item G, archive banker boxes. The staff recommends the bid be rejected due to budgetary constraints and request permission to re-advertise. I have a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Gidry. We've got some discussion. Mr. Forham?
Thank you, Mr. President. On item E, the official journal, I don't know if you can answer this, how does this price compare? Since there's only one paper in town, are we trapped here? Or is this comparable rate that we've been paying for years? I don't know how it compares to what we've been paying.
I couldn't tell you if it's a comparable rate for years. I'm sure the price has gone up, but it has been the official journal, as you know, for many years. So I can get you information on that price to make sure it's comparable. I wouldn't say we're trapped though, I just think that is the one that people go to for our information.
When you don't have a competitor, and we can't have a competitor, we can never have a competitive bid because there's only one paper in town. So, I don't know, $5 a square inch seems a little, just a little pricey to me. So I'd like that information if y'all can track it down. Thank you.
We'll do so.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Forham. Any further discussion?
How many square inches do we use last year? Just carry.
I can get you that information, Mr. Scott, and have that tee by Monday.
By inch.
By inch.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 20. Consideration Consideration of adopting resolutions accepting the following projects as substantially complete. A, Calquashu Emergency Response Training Center Safe Room Project. B, Central and Moss Bluff Library Study Room Modifications and Central Library Chiller Replacement Project. I have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objections? Motion carries. Item 21. Take appropriate action on the terms of the following members of various boards and districts. A, Mr. Jimmy Ashworth, Recreation District Number 1 of Ward 4. Move to appoint Missy Sartan Conrad.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. McMillan to appoint Ms. Missy Sartan Conrad and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objections? Item carries. B, Mr. Harvey J. East, Ward 5 Fire Protection District Number 1.
Move to appoint George Pete Miller.
Second.
Got a motion to appoint Mr. George Pete Miller and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Bullet C, Ms. Joy Abshire, Community Center and Playground District Number 2 of Ward 4.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Foreman to appoint Mr. Doug Como and a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. D, Mr. George L. Ackelson, Recreation District Number 1 of Ward 4. Move to reappoint. Got a motion to reappoint by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. E, Mr. Bernard Habbits. Water Works District Number 8 of Wards 3 and 8. Got a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Advise items. Item 23. Consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late...
Yeah, F, President. Workforce Development.
Workforce Development Board.
Sorry, wasn't highlighted. Workforce Development Board, Ms. Mayo and Mr. Latour.
Am I reading all this?
I'm trying to figure a way, a good way to do a motion that we can avoid a whole lot of reading for you, Mr. President.
We can do an exception except for...
Yeah, why don't we, if you can entertain a motion to, to allow all of the reappointments to go through, and then we'll come back and do the, the new appointees.
Move to reappoint.
What does the motion need to be again, sir?
To, to, that's sufficient. Move to reappoint the, the members as noted in the agenda to be reappointed.
Okay, so we have a motion to reappoint all the members.
As reflected on the agenda.
As reflected on the agenda by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection?
Perfect. That motion carries.
That motion carries.
And, Mr. President, now if we can go to item F2 for Ms. Hope Prather.
Item F2. Private sector nominating agencies. I'd like to appoint Ms. Christina Deintivo.
Second.
I'm still trying to find this, sir.
F2.
Okay. Got a motion to appoint Ms. Christina DeTivo. DeTivo. Second, a motion by Mr. Latour, second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
And that was, President, if you can move to item F3.
I'd like to appoint Ms. Janice Breland. Second.
Got a motion to appoint Ms. Janice Breland by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Okay, item, let's see, F4.
Move to appoint Mr. Richard Polk.
Got a motion to appoint Mr. Richard Polk, second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 22 are advise items. 23. Consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late James R. Jimmy Andrus, who served as the Calquashu Parish Clerk of Court for 14 years. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, Mr. Andrus, of course, even before he was Clerk of Court, he, he worked in that office for many, many, many years. And he did a great job, very, very nice man. For those of y'all that, that knew him, always had a smile on his face, very polite. And he was a religious man as well. And I know his family's gonna greatly miss him, and the community will as well. He was a great public servant. And I believe it's from DeQuincey, Ms. Trimmie, isn't that correct? That was his hometown.
I'm not gonna answer that, but I will say the one that is there is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
And a motion to accept.
Okay, we've got a motion to accept by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Landry.
Chris covered it all, but this was one of the nicest guys you ever wanted to meet. When we had to qualify to go for any election stuff, Jimmy was always there. He walked you through. He made you feel no pressure at all when it came to that. He, great job, from what I understand, he, he lived a full life in his retirement, and he was very active in his church. And a guy that was a, a true large mentor in Calquashu Parish, and he will be missed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.